We'll call the Dallas City Council meeting of July 7, 2025 to order at 7:00 PM and ask the city recorder to call the roll.
Council President Briggs.
Here.
Counsel Barantos is excused. Counsel Blaser.
Here.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counsel Hozapple.
Here.
Counsel Jantz.
Here.
Counsel Schilling.
Here.
Counsel Shane.
Here.
Spivey.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. I have a quick proclamation to read and then we'll go right into swearing in the police chief. Oh, did I miss the pleaded allegiance? I'd been in big trouble for that. Please join me.
My pleaded allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian, for saving my bacon. Now I'll read that proclamation real quick. The City of Dallas, Dallas Days 2025 Proclamation. Whereas summer festivals serve as vibrant celebrations of community spirit, bringing together individuals from all walks of life to enjoy shared experiences and foster connection, and whereas Dallas Days provides valuable cultural and recreational opportunities for residents and visitors of Dallas, and whereas Dallas Days contributes to the economic vitality of our community by supporting local businesses and attracting tourism, and whereas the citizens of Dallas recognize the importance of such events in promoting well-being, enhancing quality of life, and building a stronger community, now therefore I, Richard Slack, Mayor of the City of Dallas, do hereby proclaim July 25 through July 27 as Dallas Days 2025 in the City of Dallas. I urge all Dallas citizens and visitors to fully participate in and enjoy the activities and celebrations of Dallas Days 2025 and to embrace the spirit of community that it represents. All right, Brian, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. I'm going to invite Jerry Mont to come meet me in front of this table here. All right, so those who don't know, Jerry Mont's our new police chief. I'm just going to swear him in. Right, Jerry, you're standing. If you have to me. I state your name.
I am Jerry Mont.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the laws.
The Constitution of the laws.
The State of Oregon.
The State of Oregon.
The Charter of Laws and Ordinances.
The Charter of Laws and Ordinances.
Of the City of Dallas.
City of Dallas.
The rules and regulations of the Dallas Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Dallas Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Chief of Police.
As Chief of Police.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right. I think that's all we had today. I want to thank all our police officers for coming in as they exit the room. It's great to see you all.
All right, well then we'll move on to public comments. Now's the time for public comment. For the record, please provide us with your name and whether or not you live inside the city limits. You have up to three minutes. It is your turn to talk and ours to listen. You are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Do not direct your comments to individual councilors, staff, or members of the audience. Defamatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. It is expected that you will maintain decorum and respect for each other. A wide variety of viewers watch these proceedings, therefore we would ask kindly that you refrain from the use of offensive language and name-calling. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. And the first person I have up is Ann Hurd.
Thank you, Mayor. Ann Hurd, and I live in Dallas. I'm also president of Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center, and I wanted to share the email that we're going to be sending out to the patrons of the pool. We sent an email out last year about this time because there were so many things that were going wrong with the pool, and it was like, we need 15,000 for the sand filters, and then the check valve broke and leaked water all over the mechanical room, and then this happened and that happened. And so this is our update that we're sending our people. Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center Maintenance Updates and News. Thank you for your donations and banner renewals. June 24, 2024 to June 30, 2025, we raised $37,352, an amazing commitment from you, our supporters. That includes the banner rentals, too. Your donations helped complete the following projects. The second boiler was removed and fixed, not replaced, saving thousands of dollars. The leaking check valve that brings water into the pool from the city was replaced. Cost was $10,000. There's one more check valve that is still working fine, but someday it will have to be replaced, too. Heat exchangers were installed in all the pools. New valves on the sand filters were placed in the lap pool and the therapy pool. The ADA door was replaced on the family bathroom. That cost $9,000. Pool supplies were replaced, including noodles and flippers. Jennifer Ward, Administration Services Manager, sent in an Itemizer Observer article on March 12, 2025. The contributions from the Friends of the Aquatic Center have been crucial. She explained there have been times when she just didn't know how they would have been able to stay open and operate five pools without them. Ward said she doesn't have the budget or capital to afford to keep up with maintenance costs without the Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center. Because they are constantly fundraising, they're refilling the trust fund, so I have a fund I can draw from to fix things, she said. Jennifer Ward has been named Dallas Public Works Director, so she won't spend as much time at the pool, but will still have an active part in its health and welfare. And then I'm talking about our fundraiser. On September 20, we are having, we're going to Moonfall Theater. We've got the whole theater reserved for movie, let's see. Moonfall goes to the movies, so there'll all be musical themes from the movie. And we have 50 tickets, $20 each. If we sell out, we'll wait $1,000 for our account. Dessert will be served at intermission, and there's phone numbers to call for tickets. See you at the pool. And that's what we're sending out, and hopefully they'll be so thrilled that they'll give us even more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next person I have up is Elizabeth Underwood.
Hello. I'm going to speak down in the recital, so you'll have to forgive me. It's all right. So my name's Elizabeth Underwood. I do live in the city limits. I've been asked by my neighbors, I'm in the Gordon subdivision, which is Anna Avenue, Virginia, it's up off Cloud Corner and Godsey Road. There is an industrial complex that has been built off of Cloud Corner, which is now, has a road named "The Sky's the Limit" with a dead-end sign on it. So that is going to bring traffic up Virginia and Anna, which are not collector streets. I've looked through your literature. What I can find is even a narrow collector street should be 36 feet in width. Anna is 30 feet. The streets in the neighborhood are 30 feet. It was not meant to be a collector neighborhood. So there's concern with semi-trucks. Some of the buildings back there have doors that are meant for semi-trucks to back up to. It's probably even the thickness of the asphalt on the streets is not appropriate for heavy equipment. When they built the industrial complex, they were bringing dump trucks through with pups, and they collapsed the road in by our drain. It's a flood zone. So there's already been a lot of damage done back there, and we are very concerned that there's going to be a lot more traffic and heavy equipment coming through there. So we're asking that this, we want to, you know, we want to let you know that that's happening and try and help find a way to resolve it, so we don't have heavy equipment coming through the neighborhood, or semi-trucks, or whatnot. The best thing I could find was in Portland, they have like 100 miles of neighborhoods that are local access only. It keeps slow neighborhoods, it keeps people out that, you know, shouldn't be coming through there. It definitely shouldn't be a access for an industrial complex. So anyway, that's, we just want to make sure that was brought to your attention, and hopefully you can help us come to a solution, you know, so we don't have to deal with this, because it's gonna, it's not going to be the last conversation if it becomes a thoroughfare for an industrial complex. So, that's all.
Thank you, Brenna. I appreciate it.
Yeah, so if I can just roll fast, Mayor. Elizabeth, have you met our Public Works Director, Jennifer, in the back here? Jennifer, do you want to wave your hand? So why don't you guys connect, and we'll follow up, have the conversation on that. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right, do we have anyone else who wants to testify tonight from the audience? Do we have anyone on the phone? All right, we'll close the public comments and move on to the consent agenda. I have approval of the June 16 work session, approval of the June 16 council meeting minutes, and a note that we are canceling the July 25, 2025 city council meeting. There'll still be a work session that evening, though, correct?
There'll be a work session, it's not a business meeting.
May you want anything removed from the consent agenda?
Second.
Removed by Counsel Schilling and seconded by Counsel Shane to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, reports and comments from mayor and council members. I have nothing. Michael.
I have two things. On July 19, I had the opportunity to ride along with the staff of our city fire and EMS services. I started at 7:00 AM, determined to get an in-depth look at the daily operations of the department. At the last presentation that Chief Wallace made to the council, she stated that the average activity rate for the department was around 65% during a 48-hour shift. I wanted to get a feel for myself of what that looked like, hoping I would get an in-person perspective of an average workday for the staff of the fire and EMS department. We were out the door at 7:06, headed to a rollover crash on Falls City Road. The EMS services were required to backfill for Southwest Polk Fire, who didn't have a medic unit in service at the time. I later learned that this is a common interdepartment sharing of workload as neighboring agencies require assistance. Those agencies also provided to the city when our department is tied up on other calls and can't immediately respond. The calls continued throughout the day, and as I jumped between one medic unit and another, long story short, I didn't make it back to the station for any meaningful break until after 6:00 PM. What I witnessed should make every citizen in Dallas feel confident in their fire and EMS department, and the dedicated men and women who serve the community daily. I saw compassionate professionals who were highly trained, working as a cohesive team to address the needs of every person they contacted. I was impressed with how caring and detailed they were with each patient that they encountered. I was able to sit through an in-house training session of the Inspirator Positive Air Pressure, or IPAP, breathing apparatus machine used in the medic units to assist patients with breathing during transport. I found the instructor, who happened to be one of our staff members, to be highly trained and knowledgeable about the device, and how it could be adjusted for patient comfort and maximum effectiveness to assist with breathing. I also had some good conversations with the full-time staff about what they're able to provide on a daily basis to the community for services. There are up to three rotating medic units and one engine in service on every shift. Two of the medic units were operational when I was there, as they didn't have enough staff for the third, with it being a holiday, to operate that third medic unit. Typically, it is dedicated for interfacility transports. What I learned was that these calls for services end up generating revenue for the department after insurance pays for those services. This also requires regular and repeated trips from our local hospital to the care facilities and care facilities in the community to Salem Hospital. There were times during the day when both medic units were at the Salem Hospital, leaving the city, to rely on neighboring agencies if an emergency came up. This was what spurred me to speak with City Manager Latta about looking into how much revenue, on average, gets generated by the interfacility transport, to see if they could fund any part-time positions to keep that unit staff during all shifts. I know that Chief Wallace runs the department well and has the best interests of her staff in mind. I just want to ensure that every possibility is given consideration as we look to stretch every dollar available in the budget to provide the services required in the community. I found that our medic units are running at high mileage, and the only upside being the majority of those miles are highway miles. Runs back and forth to Salem, and at times hospitals up in the Portland area, over time, are taking a toll on the equipment. Chief Wallace reported that the city shops do an excellent job keeping the equipment repaired and regularly serviced, which is stretching every dollar of use out of these units. I strongly urge any council member who hasn't taken the time to see for themselves firsthand the inner workings of the fire and EMS department, to take a day, spend it with the professionals working there. To the citizens of Dallas, I can assure you that your fire and EMS department is filled with dedicated, well-trained, caring, compassionate professionals who dedicate themselves to your health and safety daily.
Michael, for doing that. Go ahead, you have some more stuff? Go ahead.
One more. Mayor Slack and fellow council members, I was contacted by a citizen of Dallas who asked for a review of the city's noise ordinance, ordinance 5.020. The request comes based on an incident where loud music was blaring in the neighborhood so much that it was clearly audible from within the residence of the person I spoke with about this issue. Local law enforcement was notified, but they were advised that since it was not within the restriction hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM listed in the current city ordinance, these type of violations, no enforcement action was warranted. The ask from the citizen was that the council review the ordinance with other similar ordinances from neighboring cities such as Monmouth, Independence, Salem, Kaiser, and McMinnville, to see where or if any improvement could be made to the current ordinance. Recent news from the Portland area this week highlights the need for a review of this city ordinance regarding the creation of a noise disturbance. Citizens living near federal ICE buildings have reported protesters using tactics such as blaring loud music at the buildings during all hours of the day. These sounds, amplification, can be clearly heard within structures during daylight hours, causing discomfort, alarm, and annoyance to homeowners in the immediate area. The ask is to be able to give the city police the authority that they need within the scope of the law to address citizen concerns of unwarranted sound amplifying devices used outside the limitations of our current ordinance, specifically ordinance 5.020, Section 3F, which limits the time of the violation from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. I'm asking the council to take up a review of the ordinance to determine if adding a prohibition to noise created by amplified speakers during all hours can be clearly audible within structures such as churches, residences, shops, hospitals, and other structures typically occupied by persons. Additionally, a review of Section 10 regarding the civil penalty amount should be reviewed, as my understanding that this ordinance has not been reviewed in several years, and an increase in the minimum bail amount is likely warranted.
Michael, can you, Brian, can you elaborate on what that process would be?
Yeah, so either the mayor or the council can decide to refer that. I would recommend it be referred to the Administration Committee, which meets at the end of the month. So if you want to just refer that item, you can do that yourself, Mayor.
I would go ahead and refer that to the Admin Committee.
All right, so the Admin Committee will pick that up at the end of the month. Thank you.
Counselors? All right, let's head on to the city manager and staff.
So we don't have any reports tonight?
Just ready to move on to ordinances?
Yep.
I have ordinance number 1906.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordnance 1906 is amending chapters 2.2 and 3.6 of the Dallas Development Code regarding accessory dwellings, setbacks, and flags.
Any discussion regarding that before we take a vote on it? I'll ask the city recorder to take a roll call vote.
Counsel Blaser.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Hozapple.
Yes.
Counsel Jantz.
Yes.
Counsel Schilling.
Yes.
Counsel Shane.
Yes.
Counsel Spivey.
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs.
Yes.
All present counselors have voted yes, and it passes unanimously. All right, ordinance number 1908.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. Ordnance 1908 is an ordinance amending Section 7.856 of the Dallas City Code regarding itinerant merchants.
Do you have any questions or comments regarding that ordinance before we take a roll call vote? Signify, and I'll ask the city recorder to take a roll call vote.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Hozapple.
Yes.
Counsel Jantz.
Yes.
Counsel Schilling.
Yes.
Counsel Shane.
Yes.
Counsel Spivey.
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs.
Yes.
Counsel Blaser.
Yes.
All councils have, counselors have voted in affirmative. It passes unanimously. Move on to ordinance 1909.
Ordnance 1909 is an ordinance vacating the public right-of-way adjacent to the undeveloped portion of Southwest 11th Avenue between Southwest Oakdale Avenue and Southwest Cherry Street, and declaring an emergency.
Do you have any questions or comments regarding this ordinance before you take a roll call vote? If not, I'll ask the city recorder to take a roll call vote.
Counsel Hozapple.
Yes.
Counsel Jantz.
Yes.
Counsel Schilling.
Yes.
Counsel Shane.
Yes.
Counsel Spivey.
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs.
Yes.
Counsel Blaser.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
All present counselors have voted yes. The ordinance passes its second reading unanimously. All right, any other business? Brian, do we have anything? Anything from counselors? All right, we're going to move right into the Urban Renewal Board Directors' meeting, but let me close this one first, and I'll open the Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors' meeting at 7:21. Can we use the same roll call? All right, same counselors present as the previous meeting. The first is a motion to approve the minutes of the June 16, 2025 Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors' meeting. Approve to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Counsel Shane and seconded by Counsel Hozapple. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Building Improvement Grant application. Counsel Shane, did you have something you needed to say?
Yeah, on the first one, well, I think it's the first one, the one concerning New Morning Bakery, I wrote a letter in support of this some time back, and it's in the packet, so just for the sake of appearances and propriety, I'm going to sit out this discussion and vote on the New Morning application. My opinion on it is clear, because you've got it in the packet, so yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Counsel Shane.
Does he need to sit away from the dais, or is he fine to sit with us? He's fine to sit in the seat there, so.
Is there a conflict of interest, or I believe he has to vote?
He has to vote.
I'll turn over to the city attorney on the recusal.
There is a provision in the city charter that says you can't abstain, that's the word I was looking for, from a vote in the council. I'm not sure if that applies to the Urban Renewal Agency or not. I'll pass that one to the attorney.
You're putting me on the spot. The, I mean, I think the charter wouldn't necessarily, does that apply to the Urban Renewal Agency?
It speaks specifically to the council, the language does.
The charter doesn't apply to the Urban Renewal Agency, it would just apply to the city council. So just to give a little bit more context to why Counsel Shane would recuse himself in this instance, and our city attorney can support or reject what I'm going to say. In past experiences that I've had, where a counselor has, you know, made their intention on an application or a vote before the council meeting, in this case Counsel Shane obviously supports the New Morning Bakery application, which is great and is prerogative, that's a competitive application process, and so, you know, in this instance today, we only have two applications, and we have adequate funding to support both. But, you know, in the event that, say, we had, you know, five applications, in that instance, where he's giving credence to one application, not knowing what the other applications were, you know, even about, or had the opportunity to learn about that and have the discussion amongst the counselors, he's kind of made up his mind, you know, ahead of time. In those instances, you know, he's showing his bias, and by that bias, he would, you know, want to recuse himself from participating in that conversation, in that discussion. I've experienced this with other topics in other councils, and in those instances, we've asked the counselors to recuse themselves. But I'll turn over to the attorney if he has any feedback on that.
I think that makes sense, and because we're also looking at an application, this would be more like almost a quasi-judicial kind of situation. I mean, we're, you're voting on a specific thing, not just a policy. Even if there was enough funding to cover these two by themselves, there's still the possibility of other requests coming in later, so I, I mean, this seems to me where if somebody thinks, if the counselor thinks there may be an appearance of impropriety, I don't see anything that would stop him from recusing, and in fact, that may be the correct thing to do.
Works for me. Counsel Schilling.
I'm going to put a motion on the table.
Okay.
I move to award $25,000 to Building Improvement Grant, applications 2501 and 2502 each, and authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement with applicants.
I have a motion by Counsel Schilling on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Counsel Spivey. Is there any discussion? Counsel Schilling.
After reviewing the applications, I found them both warranted. They're for businesses that are instrumental to our downtown, and so I see no reason why we wouldn't approve these two grants.
Counsel Shane.
Not about the substance, but about the procedure. Are we going to vote on both of these together, or are we going to have two separate votes?
If you want to remove one, you would vote on them as one motion, because that's how it was made.
Well, based on the discussion we just had, maybe it's a good idea to separate them.
If you would like to amend it, somebody else should amend it, since you've stepped away.
I move to amend the motion as stated and separate the two.
Do we have a motion to separate the motion into two motions?
Second.
It's been seconded. Who seconded it?
Hozapple.
By Counsel Hozapple, seconded. Do you have all those now? Okay.
Discussion.
Any discussion on that motion? Let's vote on that motion, then. All those in favor of separating the motion into two motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All present counselors voted in affirmative. It passes unanimously. Does he need to make the motion separately, or just vote on them separately?
Consider each one.
All right, we'll consider 2501 first. Any discussion on 2501? Any further discussion on the New Morning Bakery application? If not, I will entertain, I will take a vote. Do we, should we do a roll call?
We can do a roll call, yeah.
Counsel, ask the city recorder to do a roll call vote, please. Counsel, ask the city recorder to do a roll call vote, please. Sorry to spring that on you.
No, that's okay. Director Jants?
Yes.
Director Schilling?
Yes.
So it's...
Skip me.
So Director Shane is not voting, correct?
Staying.
Director Spivey?
Yes.
Director Blaser?
Yes.
Director Briggs?
Yes.
Director Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Director Holesapple?
Yes.
The counselors have answered in affirmative, with Counsel Shane recusing themselves. It passes. Now I'll entertain any discussion on 2502, Oak Haven, the Oak Haven property motion. If not, I'll ask the city recorder to take a roll call vote.
Director Schilling?
Yes.
Director Shane?
Yes.
Director Spivey?
Yes.
Director Blaser?
Yes.
Director Briggs?
Yes.
Director Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Director Holesapple?
Yes.
Director Jants?
Yes.
All counselors and attendants have voted affirmative. It passes unanimously. Any other discussion tonight for the Urban Renewal?